John, you're muted.
Thank you for the reminder, Steve. I believe the last time that when you switch from the practice session to the public session, that was a risk. So, thank you for the reminder. Okay, I believe we are all set to get started. So, let's see. Our announcement is made with adequate notice of this meeting being given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 et sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you please call the roll? Hello, Nora? Are you on mute? Hello, Nora?
All right. Sorry about that. I got muted. Try it again. Councilman D. Piero.
Here.
Mr. Fergeri.
Here.
Ms. Hernandez.
Muted.
Here.
Mr. Mendel.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Chairman Von Aiken.
Here.
We also have with us tonight our board planner, Ms. Favate.
Here.
Mr. Canjiano.
Here.
Board attorney, Mr. Carlson.
Okay, very good. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. On the agenda first for tonight, we have an application 20:508. That'd be LFR 1 Halsey Logistics LLC at 60 East Halsey Roadblock 73710. It's a preliminary and final major site plan with C variances. Who do we have representing the Halsey Logistics?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Wendy Berger from the law firm of Cole Shots, and I'm here representing the applicant. If you don't hear me clearly, please speak up and let me know.
I can hear you fine. Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you. This is an application not for any construction of any building. There is a building on the property that is actively being used. The application is to add additional parking on the property so the property, which is not in conformance with the current parking code, will be in conformance. So, of course, there's additional site improvements that relate to that parking that are being installed, and those are with regard to the drainage areas. So, there will be testimony with regard to that. So, just for the numbers, we're adding 32 additional parking spaces to handicap spaces. So, 77 spaces are required, including four handicap. We are going to have 80 spaces, including four handicap. There's currently a 68,048 square foot industrial warehouse building on the site, and there's 48 onsite parking spots and two handicap spots. There are seven loading spaces, and that is not being changed. My client owns the building since July of 2019, and after they bought the building, they thought it would be wise to make improvements to the property to bring the parking up to code requirements. And that's why they approached the board and retained the services of their Bowman Consulting to come up with a plan to do so. And that is the reason why we're here this evening. I have Nikki Luludis. She's here to present the application on behalf of Bowman. We did file this quite a while ago, and because of COVID, it did not proceed for a few months. So, in some respects, that was a benefit to the applicant because we did receive reports from your professionals, and we were able to address those reports during the past few months. And we'll be able to speak with regard to that as well. So, I'd now like to call the first witness if I could.
Before you do that, we would like to address all of the waivers recommended by our planner.
Certainly.
Sure. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Most of the waivers relate to the fact that there is no new build-in proposed. So, things like spot elevations, floor plans, those types of aspects are not required. The other waivers relate to the fact that there are no natural features on the property. So, DEP letter of interpretation, storm management not changing, you know, things like a traffic study not required because of the limited nature of the project and environmental assessment report also not required. We did request some testimony on lighting and solid waste as well as construction phasing and, you know, detailed overall construction plan. I think the applicant indicated they would provide those. And then the last waivers relate to the fact that this is a combined preliminary and final site plan. So, those are typically sought and granted by the board.
Okay. Do any of the board members have any questions about the waivers being presented? Would anybody like to make a motion to accept the waivers?
So moved.
Seconded.
Very good. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Who seconded that?
That was Mr. Fergeri.
Thank you.
Do we have any opposed? No. Okay. I just wanted to make sure I heard a late "aye" and I didn't want to misconstrue that. Very good. The waivers have been accepted. Please continue, Wendy. Ms. Berger?
Okay. Thank you. So, I'd like to call as our witness the project engineer.
Who is?
Oh, Ms. Luludis. He's on the screen, I believe. You could see her.
Yes, I can see her. We'll need our attorney to swear her in. Thank you.
There you are. Okay, I got you. Raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and but the truth?
I do.
Would you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Certainly. My name is Nikki Luludis. L-O-U-L-O-U-D-I-S.
And would you give the board the benefit of your qualifications and experience, please?
Of course. I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Stevens Institute of Technology. I have been a practicing professional engineer licensed in New Jersey since 1994, and I've testified in front of several boards in Burton County as well as Somerset, Middlesex, Hunterdon Counties.
Chairman, her qualifications are submitted for your approval.
Any objections from the board for their qualifications? This witness is acceptable. Please continue.
Certainly. Ms. Luludis, could you just orient the board as to where this property is? The size and shape of the property and what's on it today?
What I'd like to do is share my screen, and I don't know if you would like me to mark each drawing as I'm going through it or do them all at once.
Why don't we mark the entire PowerPoint package as A1?
Very good. Okay. So, does everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Yes, I can see your screen. Have you received this in advance or is this something we'll need to receive after?
These are the drawings that have all been sent to the board, the latest set of drawings. I believe they're dated, the June set, June 12th. These are all drawings that the board should have. Shall I continue?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. The first drawing here is the Boundary and Topographic Survey. It was prepared by Bowman Consulting. It stated February 19th, excuse me, December 19th of 2019, last revised May 11, 2020. So, the existing site here, 60 East Halsey Road, is located on the north side of East Halsey, just west of Jefferson Road. And as you can see, it's an irregularly shaped lot just over 5.2 acres in size. The building is a 68,048 square foot single-story warehouse building with seven loading docks on the right side of the building and existing parking for 48 vehicles, all contained to the right of the building. There's no parking in the rear or in the front at this time. The rear of the site is wooded, as you could see, and there's some environmental constraints which preclude us from putting any parking back there, which we'll get into in a little bit. There is one single drainage inlet in the northeast corner of the property, and this conveys stormwater to an outfall in wooded area in the back. You'll note that there's a dumpster shown here on the survey. When the survey was done, the previous tenant had a container out here, which has since been removed by the new tenant. There is no longer a dumpster outside. And then out front, you have some floodlights, which are to be removed in the proposed condition. And then you also have a 30-foot wide driveway, which currently services the site. I'm going to go to Sheet 2 of 12 from our site plan set dated March 12, 2020, last revised June 12 of 2020. The site here, as you can see, is located in the SED 5A Specialized Economic Development District. It permits fabrication, separately warehousing products, and ancillary office space. Surrounding our site, we have buildings with similar uses. We do not afford any residential uses. All existing bulk criteria for the site is in conformance with the exception of the parking, which was as stated earlier. There are 48 current parking spaces where the town ordinance requires 70 single spaces. In addition, for the proposed, you know, while we're conforming to the parking, we're bringing that into conformance, we are requesting a variance for parking in the front yard and also a variance for keeping the driveway at 30 feet, where a recent ordinance has changed the requirement to only allow a 24-foot maximum. Here is our layout and dimensioning plan, Sheet 4 of 12, same dates as the previous sheets. On this plan, you'll see that we're adding, proposing to add two roads of parking along the front of the building. Approximately half of those parking spots are within the front yard area. We've got this area here. I don't know if you could see my hand here, my cursor moving, where we had approximately 10 spots. We're now reconfiguring this to allow for a two-way, 24-foot wide access into and out of the parking lot. So, we've got four spaces now up against the building with some striping that we were requested by the fire department to add. And then to the right here, we have five spaces which are being added along with new curb and pavement. This area is currently a gravel area where, due to the lack of parking, some automobiles do park on here currently. We've got handicap spots here, the four spots that Ms. Berger mentioned earlier, along with our signage, our striping. We have a stop sign at the driveway exit along with a stop bar and no other directional signage. We have the arrows, you know, the painted arrows. But other than that, no other directional signage. Now, with regards to the 30-foot wide driveway, I'd like to bring up the truck turning template that we've prepared. We developed this to show how a truck traveling westbound on East Halsey would turn right into the site at this acute angle. As you could see, we were using a WB50, which is a standard tractor-trailer. And as the truck turns into the site coming westbound, you can see that it's pretty tight coming in without, you know, it won't be mounting either of the curbs on either side, but it is a very tight turn. So, therefore, we're not proposing to reduce the size of that driveway from the existing. The next drawing is Sheet 5 of 12. This is our grading and drainage plan. Our total site disturbance is 0.65 acres. So, we're less than an acre, which is the trigger for DEP, one of the triggers for DEP. The other trigger for DEP is an increase in impervious area, which we're increasing by over a quarter of an acre. Therefore, the project is considered a major development, and stormwater detention and water quality are required. The project does not require stormwater recharge because the site is located in Metropolitan Planning Area 1. We're achieving the drainage reductions through a 350-foot detention system, underground pipe system, 36-inch pipe. We have two inlets, which are conveying stormwater from the new parking lot to the detention system. We have an outlet control structure, which is reducing the flows to the allowable rates. And then this is being conveyed to another inlet, which is capturing a small amount of undetained area that's not going through the detention system, going through sequentially to the water quality unit, which is further reducing the, it's reducing the pollutants in the water. And then everything is being conveyed to the existing inlet at the end of the line, which goes to our outfall. Overall, we're reducing the runoff rate from the existing that's going to this outfall. So, you can expect even, you know, less impact to this wooded area since we're discharging less runoff. If I'm going too fast, please tell me. I'm trying to keep it, keep it focused. But if you have any questions, please feel free to jump in.
So far, so good.
So far, so good. Okay. We've got landscape and lighting. This is Sheet 6 of 12, same dates as the others, other sheets. Originally, we hadn't really proposed much lighting. Now, we're looking at installing three 20-foot mounted poles. We've got our A-type poles on the street side of the parking lot. These are single-head poles, and you have a B pole here on the right, which is not only illuminating the entry to this parking lot, but also illuminating the driveway coming in. And then we have building-mounted lighting, which are these, and the E's. Where's my C? I know I have a C somewhere, and there's a C up here. We have different wall packs. We have our calculation summary here. We believe that the average, the min and max, they all fall within typical lighting standards, our luminaire schedule. They're all LEDs. Everything is mounted to 20 feet. And then as far as planting is concerned, we have a variety of evergreen deciduous trees. We're planting along the southern part of the parking lot to help screen the parking lot somewhat from the road, although it is, you know, considerable distance away. We're also including some trees out along East Halsey Road to complement what's already there. And we're providing some added greenery in this island that's formed by the new parking spots as well as the corner here. These will all be shrubs that will be limited height for, you know, site visibility, for sightline. Other than that, I think the last thing, which was a question, I believe on Ms. Favate's letter, had to do with signage. Other than some of the directional, some of the, you know, the stop signs and whatnot, we're not proposing any new building signage at this time. I'd like the, Wendy, if you can just confirm, I believe the applicant said that if there was to be a, any new signage, that they would come in with a separate permit application for that, but it would be in compliance with the ordinance.
Yes. At this point, there is no new signage proposed. If the new tenant requires that, then we would come in with a separate application. And with regard to the proposal, you did prepare as the request of, I believe, the board engineer, you did prepare certain submissions, correct? Prepared a stormwater management report?
Yes, we prepared a stormwater management report. We prepared a low-impact development statement. We also provided the operations and maintenance manual, which we had some comments on. And I believe, well, we've sent them back to Mr. Canjani's office. I believe that the comments addressed all of the concerns that Hillary and Patrick had.
And with regard to the proposed parking, was this the best place on the site in order to put the parking, in order to conform with the code requirements?
Yes, it was. It's nearly impossible to get 40 parking spots anywhere else on the site unless you go back into this wooded area. And truthfully, you know, the area has other sites where parking is closer to the road. I mean, as you can see, we've got, we're maxed out on the right side here. We, you know, can't put parking here on the left. There's some, you know, more wooded areas back here. We really tried not to touch any of the natural elements of the site, in particular in the back because of the environmental constraints. Just to touch on that a little bit, there was some indication on New Jersey GeoWeb that further back, about 150 feet, could be a wetlands area, and we did not want to have to go into that area.
And also, with regard to the site, again, if you could move the map down a little bit further, could you talk about the unique shape of this site in the front and how that affects the development of the parking in the front and keeping it behind the front lot line?
Certainly. As you can see, the site is skewed. It's got a, you know, 45-degree angle cutting, you know, across the site. So, it impacts both the turning for vehicles, larger vehicles coming into the site. It also impacts, you know, your front yard. You could see the front yard in this corner almost touches the building. So, it's nearly impossible to not utilize a portion of the site out here in order to make your 80 spaces work.
And just to clarify again, the size of the driveway is what it is today. You're not reducing that. You're keeping the same-sized driveway and not increasing the size at all.
We're not increasing the size at all. We just would like not to decrease it. We'd like to keep it the size that it is, 30 feet.
I have no further questions of this witness.
Okay. Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Canjiano, do you have any further questions for the witness?
Yeah. No, this is Andrew Canjiano, board engineer. We had an opportunity to look at the original submission. We made comments. They since then revised the plan. We had several comments on various site improvements, stormwater inlets, and some other items of housekeeping. And they revised the plans and provided that, you know, made the necessary revisions, and we're satisfied with the plans. We have a couple of minor housekeeping items with the O&amp;M operation and maintenance manual, but they had largely satisfied our original comments in their revised submission back in August. So, yeah, we don't have any other questions.
Okay. Very good. Ms. Favate, do you have any other questions or comments for the witness?
Yeah, I just have one. I think they've addressed pretty much all of our comments. We asked about the driveway, if there was any way to reduce that, and I think that's been clearly addressed. Lighting, we wanted to confirm that the floodlights. There was an existing amenity space, like a picnic table, that was right by the driveway that we suggested be, I believe that has been done. And then the last question was just on the dumpster area. I think you said the dumpster has been removed. What's sort of happening in that area? It has this sort of feel of like no man's land that might accommodate overflow parking if it's not sort of controlled a bit.
Well, we believe that by the addition of 42, not 42, but, you know, 80 minus 48 is 32, I believe.
Yes, 32.
Thank you. We believe that with the addition of the 32 spots, there would be no need to park in the back there anymore. And the fact that, I know there were cars parked back there. There were some cars parked on the gravel. The piece that's, I don't know if you see my cursor, but where the five new spots are to the right of the driveway, there were cars parked there as well. We believe that by increasing the number of spots and creating this definitive area for parking, that there will no longer be parking along the back there. I think it was only one or two cars that they had been parking right next to the dumpster right in here.
And also, if I may add, now the parking will be to the entrance of the building. So, there'll be more of a reason for people to park in the new parking because they could get in. It'll be easier given in inclement weather. So, that's a positive. And we did have a change of tenant, so that's why that dumpster is in summer. I think it was July or August. So, that's why that dumpster is no longer needed.
Okay. I guess in the event that a future tenant needs it, I mean, you've got a place for a dumpster. And you're not going to have cars that are likely parking right next to it.
Right. And seven-year lease right now, so we have time to worry.
Okay. That's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Do any of the board members have questions for the witness?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mealy?
Go ahead, Mr. Mealy.
A question for Mr. Canjiano. Andrew, regarding the turning radius of trucks heading west on Halsey Road, has it been a problem with the, let's say, the back wheels going on to that radius to the right of the driveway? The driveway seems to be adequate enough at 30 feet, but what about the right-hand side?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, this is Andrew. Yeah, their exhibit is pretty accurate. They used a WB50 truck, which is like the mid-size tractor-trailer. And in viewing the site, there's no evidence of erosion or rutting beyond the curb line. So, I agree with the applicant that the 30-foot driveway is working and it is properly sized. I don't think it should be reduced, nor does it appear to need to be widened for the truck. Appears to be working pretty well.
Thank you, Andrew.
Any other board members with questions? I have just one question, Ms. Luludis. The area that we refer to for the dumpster pad, is there any issue with creating a better separation between that space?
I think we're far enough from, you know, the environmentally sensitive area to really, you know, to do something there. But without doing a full wetlands delineation, I can't say for certain where the transition area might be. So, we wouldn't want to... wetlands delineation, I can't say for certain where the transition area might be. So we wouldn't want to disturb the area if we don't have to, but if we need to replace a dumpster pad, for instance, we can do that.
Okay. All right. Any other board members? Any members of the public have a question for this witness?
This is IT. I'm gonna enable the raise hand for anybody from the public. And they would click on the three-dot button and they can raise their hand from there. Just give me one second. Okay, that's now enabled.
All right. I'll give it a minute so that any members of the public can raise their hands if they have any questions for the witness. Okay, not seeing any hands. I'll go ahead and, and move on to comments. Are there any comments from the public about this application? Okay. Ms. Berger, is there anything you'd like to say in closing? Or do you have more witnesses?
I have no other witnesses this evening. I just wanted to add that we did provide proof of publication and proof of service to the board secretary, or to the hearing.
And same was reviewed and is acceptable.
Thank you. So just in closing, we think this application would be an improvement to the property. It would be a help to the neighborhood because we'll bring the property up to conformity with regard to parking. We've laid out the parking as best as could be based upon the unique size and shape of the frontage of the property. And we believe that the thirty-foot wide driveway is consistent with what's there now and should be maintained in order to properly allow trucks in and out based upon the unique configuration of the frontage of the property. And we thank the board for its consideration.
Okay. In that case, are there any comments from the board at this time? Okay, seeing no, no comments from the board, I'll open this up for. I'm sorry, I'm having a little trouble thinking of what I'm wanting to say.
Chairman, 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 we're looking for a motion to either approve or deny this application.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mealy.
Go ahead, Mr. Mealy.
Motion to approve application twenty colon five oh eight ORF one Halsey Logistics LLC, sixty East Halsey Road, block seven thirty-seven, lot ten, preliminary and final major site plan with C variance.
Okay, I have a second to Mr. Mealy's motion.
Second, Hernandez.
All right. Nora, please make a roll.
Councilman DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Frigiri.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Mandel.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Chairman Von Aken.
Yes. All right. Ms. Berger, thank you very much for your time, as well as you, Ms. Loidis. Thank you.
Thank you all. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, Berger.
Nora, I just got myself on just now through the audio. I was watching and listening, but I finally have audio.
Excellent.
I tried to vote on, ask questions on that one, and I couldn't do it.
Well, nice of you to sit out the controversial application of the night.
But I'm here now. Tom Dinsmore, Din Paul.
For the record, that Tom Dinsmore has joined the board as of eight ten PM at the beginning of the application of Lanex.
Right. And with that, we have coming forward application nineteen colon five nine nine H Lanex LLC and one H eleven H Lanex LLC, eight hundred to nine hundred Parsippany Road, Lanex Plaza Lot One, one hundred to seven hundred Parsippany Road, Lanex Plaza Lot Two, Block three nine, lots one and two, preliminary and final major site plan, preliminary and final major subdivision, major soil moving permit. And who do we have for the, for the applicant?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Joseph O'Neil, here on behalf of the applicant to continuing hearing.
With this again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Somebody's making background noise. Who else hearing it?
Yes, I am hearing it also.
Sounds like a train going through on my end.
Still there.
Maybe someone on the phone? Okay.
It seems to have stopped.
Okay.
All right. Thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Sorry.
All right, seeing we've, we've this for a third time before the board, Joe, I'll let you go ahead and move forward.
We need to get answered. Can you hear me? Thank you.
There you are.
We have some questions from the last meeting that we want to answer.
Hold on. Fortunately, the heavy breathing is back.
It's not me.
Ms. Akaro, can you mute your microphone, please? All right, it looks, and Mr. Von Aken, if you could mute for the moment?
Yes.
Everybody's on mute. Oh, there it is again.
Are we okay?
Proceed.
Thank you. Before I proceed, I'd like to have Chris Serati moved up to a panelist, if I could. He's in the attendees right now. He's one of my people. But what we have here, we had some questions left over from the last hearing, mostly concerning the site plan. There was a question about the shared parking and the access to Midrise Building Number One that we had, that we'd like to address that first. We did send some additional exhibits to the board, but the first thing I'd like to do is go to the floor plan of the first Midrise Building, and I asked Mr. Myola to come back and testify.
Just for the record, Mr. O'Neil, are these exhibits of the previous plan or are these revised?
These are from the previous plans. This is from the May twenty-seventh set of plans. I need Stuart Johnson able to present, if I could, please.
He's on.
Stuart, why don't you give it a shot there?
He needs to unmute.
He needs to present. Dan Myola is gonna be testifying.
Mr. Johnson needs to unmute her.
No, they can't hear you.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, who's that?
This is Stuart Johnson, the architect with the applicant.
He needs to present, that's all. Dan Myola is gonna be talking.
Mr. O'Neil, is this your first witness?
Mr. Myola is coming back as my first witness. He'll be talking about these plans.
So who's Mr. Johnson?
He's presenting. He's my tech guy here helping me out. He's also of Minnawasko Architects, if there are any questions.
Let me make this easy for you, Mr. O'Neil. Who do I need to swear in?
Mr. Myola again for the third time.
Myola, I will remind you that you are still under oath from previous hearings.
I understand.
Okay.
So, Mr. Myola, we had a question at the last hearing. How are the people accessing through shared parking the deck here that they see for Midrise Building Number One? And the answer at that time was to walk around the building, but that's actually not correct. As it's shown on these May twenty-seventh plans, how do people access that deck?
Employees for the, the three office buildings to remain will park in, or can park in this parking deck from multifamily building one, and then they would move through the lobby of that building entrance of the building, which is the southern doors. And so from there, they'll be able to access the sidewalk system that is proposed on the site to go to any of the office buildings that are proposed to remain.
So the entrance is through the lobby there. There's a vestibule behind the elevators that everyone can see at the back of the lobby, and that's the entrance in to the deck. Isn't that true?
That's correct.
The handicap parking for that deck is all lined up right there in front of that vestibule. Everyone can see it on the left in the deck. And that is on the bigger plan that you've received back in May. So there's no sidewalks or anything that needs to be added here. So if we could go to, we sent some exhibits into the board a couple of weeks ago. The first exhibit, as you see here, is a, some, a key map with some details around it. Let's start with the sidewalk proposed for Parsippany Road. Mr. Myola.
Sure. Just to orient everybody that's following along the screen here, this exhibit, the, the view at the top in the middle is of the, the entire site. And then we have these small enlargements around that. And each, each enlargement has, is numbered. So we're gonna start with number one, which shows sidewalk connecting the site driveway Lanex Plaza Drive and Parsippany Road down across the frontage of the Chase Building and across the frontage of the Insurance Building, and ultimately connecting to the intersection of Parsippany Road and Allentown Road. So we had indicated that there was insufficient right-of-way behind that curb to squeeze in a sidewalk, but upon looking at it a second time, there is enough room for a four-foot sidewalk with about one feet, one foot of spacing between the edges of the sidewalk and the face of the curb. And we've followed up with the county who said that they would, that they would allow this sidewalk with that, with those dimensions as long as the township wanted it. And so we.
Do we have anything in writing that did that affect?
Not yet, but we can get it. We've had verbal discussions with the county.
You do have the report from the county.
That'll be a condition, I'm sure, of the approval.
Yeah, there, there was a report issued by the county previously recommending the sidewalks, so we're just complying with that condition.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Moving on to number two is the, number two is the crosswalks also that the county was discussing. Mr. Myola, could you describe that for us?
Yes, so number two shows the existing intersection of Lanex Plaza Drive and Parsippany Road. We, through coordinating with Morris County, we are committed to replacing, removing and replacing that existing traffic signal with a brand-new signal and putting crosswalks and ADA ramps at all four legs of the intersection. And so that is what's depicted on that enlargement that's labeled with the number two.
Now, there was quite a bit of discussion on handicap parking for Building seven hundred where we were proposing that. Your decision is to leave it where the handicap parking is now. Well, generally speaking, if you could describe that in detail three for us?
Yes, so detail three, right in the center of the, the exhibit, shows existing office building seven hundred. The ADA entrance for that office building is located on the west side of the building, and that is where there are existing seven spaces. We are proposing, you know, essentially to, to cut in seven new ADA spaces very, very close to where they exist today. So we'll, we'll be replacing them in kind and keeping the same number of, of what that building has today.
So now detail number four concerns the sidewalk that was unintentionally omitted behind the townhomes to the eastern side of the entrance drive for the townhomes. Could you just describe that for us, please?
Yes, we are proposing to add a sidewalk behind those townhomes similar to what's proposed to the west, to the, to the townhomes to the west and to the east of it.
Now, detail number five, detail number five concerns back up at Midrise Building Number One, there were some retaining walls there. You've redesigned that to comply with local ordinances. Could you just describe that for us?
Yes, the one-wall system has been separated into a, two separate walls that are, are going, going to be tiered. And so what, what's shown in the cross-section right below the number five shows about how that would look and the landscaping we would put in front of the walls. But it's a modular block retaining wall, and by separating it into two and spacing them apart from each other, we are able to comply with the, the ordinance requirements for wall heights.
You've actually proposed a construction detail that we provided to the board. If we could show that, please. Out there on the left, could you talk about that, Mr. Myola?
Yeah, so on the left is the, the technical engineering detail for the, the two, the two-wall, the tiered-wall system. And again, it's shown as modular block retaining wall, you know, with all the, the relevant stability type of engineering details. Also shown on the exhibit, which we discussed at the last hearing, is the the delivery and garbage truck serviceability of the multifamily building number two, which this exhibit shows how the trucks would access that building by, by traveling down the driveway to the east side of that multifamily building to building.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. I have no further questions for this witness.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Pavate, has any further questions for this witness?
Yes, sorry, I was trying to unmute. Mr. Mealy, just a question on the crosswalk at the driveway. If you could go back to that picture, please. Is there any way to get the median configured so that the crosswalk, that there's, that there's a pedestrian refuge in the crosswalk at the median so that there's not that, that lengthy crossing at the driveway?
So that's something we can look at, or Ms. Pavate, if you, on paper, if you need to be further in board of the site, I would have to look at the proposed grades of that driveway to confirm if that's feasible. There is a bit of a slope coming down.
Right, right.
Parsippany Road there. But that's something I could look into.
We do have room to do that there, don't we, Mr. Myola?
We, in plan of view, we mentioned, yes, we can. Again, I'm just have to check the grades to see that, that there's enough of a plateau that I can build to squeeze in the crosswalk.
Well, I'd like to hear what Andrew has to say because it's just something that struck me that, you know, you have the, you know, you have the median right there. It would be nice to have a pedestrian refuge, but refuge, but Andrew, what are your thoughts on that? If it's a grading issue, then, I don't know.
Well, it's a very good point, you know. It's good to provide the pedestrian refuge and a wider opening like that. So I agree. I mean, you can take a look at it. If it becomes problematic with grades or distance or curve radii or locations of signal heads, it is very good request. I agree. It should be looked into. Ultimately, would have to meet the county's approval for the intersection improvements, but it is a very good comment. So I agree. Please look into, the applicant should look into trying to slide that crosswalk more into the property to provide a pedestrian refuge. So, yeah, it should be looked into.
I think I'm sorry, Susan, but Mr. O'Neal, what approvals are needed to do a crosswalk, Cross 202 there? It occurs to me that's five lanes right there.
Well, it's county approval, and that's what the county wants. So that's part of what's necessary to give them county approval.
I'm sorry, what do you mean by that's what the county wants?
The county wanted crosswalks and signalization improvements. It's part of their report, so that's what we're going to do.
Yeah, my understanding is ultimately it's their approval to grant, correct?
That is correct.
It's a county road.
Yes.
Okay. My, I just had one other comment, which is really very minor, but on detail number four on this page, the new sidewalk behind the townhomes, can you just line it up with the other one?
Yes, we can do that. So it lines up with the homes to the east of them. So, yeah.
Thank you. That'll make me a little less switchy. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to add, it's Andrew Candriano again. These exhibits, thank you, they're clear, but of course, we'll just, as part of the documentations that submitted, full engineered design for the improvements, the sidewalks that are on the county road, in particular detailing dimensions, grades, slopes, et cetera. And then again, even for the detailed provided on the retaining wall, a little bit more information, the maximum wall height is not provided. So we commented that additional detailing is required, and again, we agree with the exhibits, but more detailing and site-specific information will be, you know, needed on the site plans. That's all I have.
Okay, a quick question for Mr. O'Neal. Assuming the direction is feasible, entering the property, is there something you'd be willing to comply with?
I'm not really getting your question, sir. Can you repeat it?
Yeah, somebody's still breathing very loudly on the audio. If everyone that's not speaking could mute themselves, that might be helpful.
John, you muted.
Can I just chime in for a second? This is IT. If everyone can keep their volume on their speakers as low as possible, it'll stop getting some of this feedback and interference.
Mr. O'Neal, if you can mute yourself too while you're not speaking, can I invite you to unmute when you are?
Sure, thanks.
Well, that's much quieter.
Continue.
You're on mute, sir. Chairman, you're on mute.
Oh, thank you. Mr. O'Neal, is that a condition you'd be willing to accept on the refuge, assuming it's feasible?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Do any of the other board members have questions for Mr. Miola at this time?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mandell.
Please go ahead, Mr. Mandell.
Yeah, this is just for, I guess, my information. You're doing a signal replacement. The county specifies the signal, I'm assuming, and is the county then responsible for the timing, or will this be some sort of traffic count to determine when the vehicles, I've got to think about this, heading south, I'm turning into the new driveway?
The county does the timing of the signal.
Fixed timing, or is it variable?
I'm not sure. Maybe we can get an answer as to how frequently they revisit the timing of signals, but they control the timing of the signals.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board members with questions at this time? Mr. DiPiero?
Yeah, on this diagram, could you put your little arrow and show me how a child lives in the furthest-away townhouse would get to Allentown Road?
Sure. I'm not controlling the mouse, but my colleague is. So it's going to be walking down the main boulevard, the main road, then turning right, going on that north-south road to the boulevard, and then west on the boulevard to Parsippany Road. We've measured the distance from that easternmost townhome to the school. It is 1.0 miles, so it's exactly one mile. It's 0.7 miles from the driveway that heads into the site.
Okay, realistically, do you think a child is going to take that route, or is it going to walk between the IBW building and the bank?
There's quite a bit of slope there. Is it, Mr. Miola?
Between the bank and the site, there is quite a bit of slope, yes. The site is a little flatter in relation to IBW, but yes, the bank property, there is a slope.
I'm not a gambling man, but I'll bet you that's the way the kids are going to walk.
Mr. Miola, do you have an exhibit that you can show us how the kids will walk?
The exhibit is really the center view of this screen. It's where sidewalks are provided on the site for pedestrians. So we're not providing a sidewalk, you know, through the private property to access the road. The sidewalks are provided, a whole network of sidewalks are provided on the site.
Well, I think the simple question is, once they get off the site, what happens?
So, so once they get off the site at the Parsippany Road driveway, they would travel to the south from there across the Chase Bank property, across the Insurance Building property, and Allentown Road.
A very long
We've measured it, and it's only a mile, Councilman DiPiero. What we did, I don't know if you were familiar with, at the last meeting, we did offer a shuttle if the board so required. That would be something called subscription busing under the law. The town, the school board would have the ability to accept that if the town authorized it to do so.
Yeah, I would. If they would accept that, I would like that better. We really don't know how many children of elementary school age are going to come out of here, so it's hard to wrap my arms around it, I guess.
Well, our projections weren't a lot, but we were willing to take that step to alleviate concerns of the board.
Yeah. My concern is if we have 20 children, elementary school age, and they can't fit them in Eastlake, they'll have to be bused to some other school. But the school board has to make that decision.
A question from, question from me, that's Chairman Von Aken. The end of the west end of the townhouse, I believe that area where the circle is, that's designated for emergency vehicle access, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, so we would not be able to put a fence or any other kind of barrier to prevent children from walking through there, right?
We actually have a gate on that drive, an emergency gate with a Knox box for the fire department, so they can get through there, but the rest is gated off.
Okay.
Mr. O'Neal, if I can double back to the busing question, it sounds as though your client is willing to offer something which I'm not, you know, I'm not aware of, but I'm sure it's valid, called subscription busing for the site. And
That's what it's called when you offer it to the board, yes. They call it subscription busing.
Okay, admittedly, I've never legally dealt with subscription busing, but I assume that your client is willing to offer that in perpetuity.
Yeah, well, yeah, as a condition of the approval, that's what we're offering.
Okay.
It's really up to the board, school board.
No, understood. You know, this is a new concept to both me and this board, so trying to get our heads around that.
Sure, sure.
Do any other board members have a question at this time?
Mr. Chairman?
I agree. Mr. Dinsmore?
Oh, good. I finally got the unmute correct. Is the reason that there is no sidewalk on the south side of the entrance from Parsippany Boulevard because there's too much of a slope for part of that?
The reason that there's not a sidewalk on the south side is really due to the property limits. The property line is very tight along the existing curb of that road and along the proposed curb of the road, and there's not enough room for a sidewalk.
Because I'm concerned, because I know a lot of kids who would just walk down the road then, rather than but it is what it is. Or so I've been told. All right, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mealy, did you have a second question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Please go ahead.
For Mr. O'Neal, regarding the main entrance off of Parsippany Road, I guess it's currently a private road, is it not? And would it remain so if the application were to be approved?
That is the intention of the applicant, yes.
So that being the case, the applicant would have to be responsible for snow removal, is that correct?
There's a series of laws governing that, and we will comply with that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I have an additional question regarding the, regarding the parking at Building One, if you wouldn't mind going back to that, that presentation. So you mentioned that the, that the people using the garage would be passing through the lobby of the building in order to exit, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. It's as if you also have dwelling units on that first floor. Is that also correct?
Yes, that is correct, but they're away from the lobby.
All right. Are any security or barriers for non-residents to protect the residents of those units?
You can see the security desks right there in the front by the entrance, and the atrium into the vestibule into the parking deck is designed to be monitored by that security guard. There are personnel and doormen going to be onsite at all times.
Okay, I think that satisfies my question. All right. Any other board members with questions at this time? All right. Well, then, with that in mind, I'll open it up for the public portion to ask witness or to ask questions of the witnesses at this time. I should, I should just preempt this by saying, these are questions for the witness in case there's information you don't feel was disclosed. This is not an opportunity for you to share your personal feelings about this project. You will have that opportunity shortly after. All right, with that in mind, please go ahead and open up the public portion.
I think somebody should announce that if you wish to be heard, you should raise your hand. I know this is a new format for most of us. And if somebody could explain to the members of the public where the raise hand option is, that will be helpful.
I'll field that. This is IT. On the bottom, there's a button that has three dots on it. If you click on that button, it'll give you the option to raise your hand.
Okay, it looks like it's working. I'm seeing a hand raised. Could we please hear from Ms. Valenzano?
You hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Danielle Valenzano, 18 Alexander Avenue, Parsippany. Can you spell your name for me? Sure. Danielle, D-A-N-I-E-L-L-E, Valenzano, V as in Victor, A-L-E-N-Z-A-N-O. Thank you. I have a question. I've sat through, this is now my third meeting, and I still am unclear as to whether or not we are busing these children, which you are, I'm sure, underestimating the amounts of children that are coming into this development. But the people who live here, we know exactly how many kids are going to be coming in here, and it's going to be more than you're prepared for. All of my kids went to Eastlake, Brooklawn, and the Hills. They were overcrowded then, they're overcrowded now. My kids are courtesy bused. I live on Alexander Avenue at 1.7 miles away from Eastlake. I would like an answer as to whether we are busing these children. We are already at $3 million in busing. You also do not bring up Brooklawn or Parsippany Hills. Those children will also have to be bused, and there will be a lot of them. Now, I have, this is, this was brought up at the Board of Ed meeting that I was at a couple of weeks ago. They said that they received notification that this was going to be a topic of discussion for today, but no one has formally reached out to them to discuss whether it's even legal for you guys to supply some alternative busing. Has this been rectified? This is the third meeting we're at. We all want to know. It's going to cost us a lot of money, a lot of money.
The law provides that we, that the school board is only responsible to bus children two miles or beyond. However, we have committed to provide for busing at the school board's discretion. It's completely up to the school board. That's the offer, and that stands.
And we were told that we would have an answer on that, and that is why we're all sitting here waiting.
I'll be a little more specific. The answer is, we're going to take care of it.
That's not really good enough, because we get our busing taken away occasionally, and we're considered courtesy busing. Uh, that's not really good enough because we get our busing taken away occasionally, and we're considered courtesy busing. The reason we're not, we are courtesy bused is because Yvette Maglio, one of our residents in this development, personally walked some board members of you from this development across Parsippany Road during a high-traffic area, and it was deemed totally dangerous, and they gave us courtesy busing. So I'm not understanding how all of a sudden this new city comes in and they're guaranteed to have buses, but we're not.
Because we're paying for it, but it's up to the school board. The school board doesn't have to do it if they don't want to do it. We're offering it. We're offering it to them. Can't see any reason why they wouldn't want to do it, but you'll have to talk to the school board.
Well, because it's going to deplete the resources and kill the taxpayers. So we're either going to have to build new schools because you're grossly underestimating the amount of children that are coming into this development. You're grossly underestimating the traffic. You're grossly underestimating, there's no air reports done. I mean, I'm not even going to get into that. We didn't discuss it. But these buildings are got higher over COVID. They didn't get smaller, they got higher. You tried to squeeze in two, two extra two bedrooms. Thank God they shot that down. A lot of decisions were made without taking into consideration the taxpayers here that are going to bore the brunt of this. We're all sitting here on hold, waiting for answers. We're taxed to death in this town, to death. Our water bill is going up thirty-nine percent. You're telling us you have enough water at the last meeting. No one got to speak on that. Not one person here believes we have enough water for all of these projects you guys are doing. We're going to be paying through the nose. I think we deserve an answer. That's why we're here for the third time. Just tell us what it's going to cost. If the board doesn't come back saying, yay, you can bus kids all over to Kingdom Come, and the two schools that no one wants to discuss are Brooklawn and the High, on the, I mean, on the Hills, then why are we here? We waited for another answer on this. Somebody was supposed to reach out to the school board. What happened?
I'll discuss the schools. The schools were built in the seventies for twice as many kids as go to the schools right now. So if there's some kind of crowding problem in it, we don't know where it's coming from. That's the school board. We've offered to allow for the kids to bust. It's up to the school board. The answer is, the school board can do it. We've offered subscription busing. That means we'll pay for it. I can't, I don't understand what the confusion is.
The confusion is we're three, we're three meetings in with no answer. We want to know down the pipe what this is going to cost us, and it is going to cost us. It's going to. I understand your position here. I understand you don't live here. I also understand that most of these board members don't live here either because we'd be having a totally different meeting right now if that was the case. We're overcrowded.
I can also tell you that the ratables will double at this site when the project is done, so it's not going to cost you more. It's going to alleviate your tax burden, which is what the idea is.
Nothing in this town alleviates our tax burden. You don't live here.
Hold on for a second. So, Mr. O'Neill, I'm afraid we're getting to a point where you're being asked to testify on things that aren't within your control. So I'd ask you to please refrain from, from those actions further. Ms. Valenzano, I certainly position on this. However, you're asking for things that are outside the jurisdiction of this board.
I understand that, but we were told that we, that meeting was adjourned. I sat through that meeting. That meeting was adjourned pending some sort of presentation to the board. We're waiting for a response. I'm not the only one on hold right now waiting to hear what the board is going to say. And I was really taken aback at the Board of Ed meeting when they said no formal approach has been made on the busing situation. That's alarming.
Ms. Valenzano, this is Scott Carlson, Board Attorney, if I may. Truthfully, the the, the, the ability of these kids to access the school is really outside the board's jurisdiction tonight. What is within the board's jurisdiction is access on and off the site. And the applicant has provided testimony to that effect. Whether or not that's sufficient or insufficient, I leave to the board. I'm not a deciding member. But, you know, air quality, these issues, these were, these were decided long ago by the Township Council.
Yes, without a meeting from the people. I understand that.
Oh, no, there was, there was very much a meeting. It was very much noticed, and it was very, very, very public.
Well, I was at the meeting in March, and the last meeting that you just had, you said no air quality tests were done, but that's not what I'm discussing right now.
But that, but that's, that's not a matter before the planning board.
Right.
If, if, if that were to be considered, that would have been considered before the Township Council practically a year ago.
Okay, I understand that. We were adjourned. You're the one who adjourned the meeting.
I adjourned nothing, to be clear, Ms. Valenzano.
Okay, well, I, I listened to your voice. It's pretty distinct. When you told them you were going to, we were going to come back, we needed answers about busing. And we have no answers. We weren't even sure it was legal for them to provide additional outside busing. Is it legal to do it?
Mr. O'Neill, Mr. O'Neill represents that there is a creature under the law, which I am unfamiliar with, called subscription busing. And maybe it's legal, maybe it's not. I'm going to look into this, I promise you. And we're going to see what it's all about. But Mr. O'Neill represents that it's legal. I have no reason not to believe him.
Okay. And down the pipe, my question now switches over to the board. I'm sorry, but it has to keep food for thought. I know I'm not going to get an answer here today. And if it's not legal, and if these kids have to be bused, how the hell are we paying for it? I understand you have to fill this, this COA. We're all intelligent adults. We understand we have to put, pay the piper. I get that. The project is ginormous.
Ms. Valenzano, my, my point is that if that needs to be paid for, that decision has already been made months ago.
Okay, so who's paying for it? Can somebody give me an answer? Who made the decision?
The school board.
Not according to the ones I talked to. They were waiting to hear from you guys about how they were going to fill it. I mean, they turned down additional busing for the social distancing right now. They said they don't have it in the budget.
Right. But Mr. O'Neill is offering something called, or I shouldn't say Mr. O'Neill, but his client is offering.
We don't know if it's legal. I want to know down the pike if this gets slapped in the taxpayers' face. Who makes these decisions and how the hell do we do a project this big if we don't know how much burden it's going to make on the taxpayers? I understand somebody's got to make money here, but I'm not going to get an answer. I'm sure there's about other people waiting for the same exact answer that I'm waiting for because we all stayed up to get that answer, and we're not going to get it now.
So Ms. Valenzano, decisions about busing belong to the school board. And, and that's where that decision should be made. If they need more information about this project and the use of this project, the board, the, the town council is the one that they should be reaching out to.
Wonderful. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I believe we have Marcy Phelps with the question. Marcy Phelps, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me? I'd have to turn up my volume. Can you hear me okay?
There seems to be some noise in the background.
Okay, all right. Let me just go to the other room. I had earpieces in. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you fine, thank you.
Do you have to spell my name or anything, or I'm good?
I, I believe that will be necessary for the record.
Will be necessary?
Yes.
Okay, Marcy, M-A-R-C-Y, Phelps, P-H-E-L-P-S.
And what should I address, Marcy?
Eighty-four Alexander Avenue.
All right. What's your question?
I just had a question regarding traffic. Address the question now. Was there a traffic person I had to speak with? Or just ask my question?
Just, just ask your question, Phelps, and hopefully they'll have someone that can address it.
Okay. At the last meeting, the traffic expert had stated in October two thousand nineteen that they had done traffic studies, that there would be no difference the amount of people coming out versus people traveling. And I had mentioned to him that Laninex back here has been vacant for like fifteen years, so that traffic study obviously is not going to be obvious. Have they done the traffics, like I said, he mentioned five, passing five lanes of traffic where in COVID right now, there is no traffic on Parsippany Road? Have they taken into consideration the amount of traffic, the people coming in and out of park to access Parsippany Road, crossing guards, crossing children? Has that traffic study been, been done? With the amount of people, the amount of cars?
We, our traffic expert is available, but we have already testified to this. We did the study with the site fully occupied, both for the corporate end, it was existing now, and also we did the study for the expected conditions here from this development. So we took into account all that you asked. It's in the traffic report.
Okay, but Mr. O'Neill, he had said that traffic study was done October two thousand nineteen. Is, is that correct? That's what he had said during the last meeting?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. I've lived here now for, for twenty-two years. Back when we first moved in, there was not space to be found back there, obviously viewing it from the backyard, from outside doing whatever. Just once again to mention to the board that that traffic study is not accurate because Laninex has been vacant for a good fifteen years. You can go back there and you can count the amount of cars. My concern is just the traffic. You have one way in and out. You just gave me to say seventy-five townhomes. I'm just going to say two people, hundred and fifty cars, everything else we're putting in there. How is that one way in and out going to be able to handle that amount of cars, plus all the traffic once, when COVID clears up, and then plus the amount of children? Like you said, you have to cross five lanes of traffic. I, I don't know. You know, I'm just concerned with the amount of traffic and I, I just personally feel the traffic study needs to be done to have more of, like an accurate, and very difficult to do because we're COVID now. So, you know. Yeah, that was the only, only question I had, the only concern right now. Thanks.
Thank you, Marcy.
Thanks.
I may interrupt the public portion for a second. Marcy's question raised a good one for myself. Within the complex, as they approach Parsippany Road, do we have an idea of, of what the maximum number of cars that are expected to backlog into the complex are? Is, is that question clear for you, Mr. O'Neill?
Are you referring to stacking?
I believe so. How many cars would be waiting at the wait at a given time in order to move through the intersection and onto Parsippany Road or wherever their destination is?
Let me see if we can get an answer to that. We'll recall the traffic expert here.
Okay.
Alan, are you here? You want to unmute?
I am here.
So the question was, I guess we can expand that to Chairman Von Aiken's question regarding stacking around the site. Did you take a look at that?
Uh, yes, that, that's part of the analysis that we have.
Can you answer his question?
I am.
Just give us a minute there, Mr. Chairman.
Grabbing that information as we speak.
Certainly.
So.
Mr. Chairman, while he, he gets his information together, can I address Ms. Phelps?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Sure. Ms. Phelps, I'm a longtime land use law practitioner. And one of the things that, things that frustrates me and many members of the public is the fact that when we do Mr. O'Neill, can you mute your mic, please? Thank you. One of the things that frustrates me to no end is that when you compare tra- traffic generation from the site as it exists to the site as it will be built, you always, always look at the site as though the site were fully occupied. Now, I I, I fully understand, as I'm sure does most of the board, that most of the Laninex office complex is vacant now and not generating much traffic. But when you do an apples-to-apples comparison from a land use perspective, look at it as though it's fully occupied. How much traffic would or could it generate under the current use? And compare that against how much traffic will it generate under the proposed use? That provides a lot of frustration to both members of the public as well as land use practitioners like myself. But that is the standard accepted practice, and on a theoretical level, it makes a lot of sense. Right now, office is not the hottest market in the world, so you're not seeing a lot of office traffic. But it could be next year, office will be red hot, and it will be fully occupied, and you'll be experiencing full office occupancy there. So I hope that adds some context to, to the question you were asking about traffic.
Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Oh, I'm still on, okay. Yeah, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to visualize, because like I said, I work in Rockaway, so I have to go that way to hop on forty-six, and right now, still there is nobody on the road. I, I just can't prior to COVID, like I said, to try to make a right Hill to get onto Parsippany Road wasn't, it's impossible, and I'm just trying to grab my mindset, and I, I just, I just don't know how you know, stacking with people trying to come, I just, I'm trying to visualize, and I'm just having a real, real difficult time because I know what the road had been, having been here twenty-two years is when it gets really, really busy, and I've also seen it when Laninex was filled going back, you know, fifteen or sixteen years ago.
There's an old joke that goes, you know, when you ask an engineer like, you know, well, you know, will this work? He'll say, well, that's fine. It'll work in practice, but I'm not sure it will work in theory. And unfortunately, that's the way the land use law works is it's not a matter of what's, what's, what are the fuel conditions today during COVID or any of this? It's, it's based on, you know, lots of engineering principles, in this case, built on something called the I T E or Institute of Traffic Transportation Engineers Manual. And that, that, that is a book, it's a thing, a phone book with every land use in the world, and it tells you based on square footage, how much traffic will this thing produce? And that's the way that you predict these things. And right now, office is still predicted at big numbers. And I think over the next several years, that will change, but right now, you know, we're, we're everything is dealt with in engineering theory, not necessarily in practice. It frustrates me to no end as a, as a land use practitioner. It frustrates people like yourself, but it's, it's sadly the reality, but it's also, I, I need to say, it's also the best way to do this. Because office, office right now can be real, real vacant and real and, and not producing a lot of traffic. But five years from now, that same, what's there today might be the hottest property in North Jersey. So it's, you know, it does not you know, when you're dealing in theory, you're not necessarily dealing with what's popular this year, what's popular last year, or COVID for that matter. So I, I hope that provides some context to, to your question.
Imagine it, you know what I'm saying. Thank you very much.
It took, it took me several years, several years after I graduated law school to get my brain around that.
Well, I can't get my brain around it, so I'm still trying to conceive it. I'm just having a real hard time.
And, and that's completely understandable, myself.
Okay, thanks.
So, Mr. Lothian, did you get a chance?
I did. So the analysis for the full build condition during all three time periods analyzed, the AM, the PM peak hour, and the Saturday peak hour. AM, the PM peak hour and the Saturday peak hour, the max anticipated 95th percentile cue for that westbound approach is 77 feet, so under 100 feet for that westbound approach exiting the site for all three time periods.
Was that, did that answer your question, Mr. Chairman, or?
Turn back to the public portion, make sure that everybody who wants to ask a question has had their opportunity. I'm seeing Ms. Valenzano's hand is still up and Ms. Phelps' hand is still up. If you no longer have a question, please lower your hand. And I'm seeing no further questions from the public. All right. With that in mind, I would like to open it up to public commentary. You can share your opinions about this project at pleasure. Just try to keep your commentary to two minutes and if we need to have any back and forth, we'll extend us as needed. Any hands to make comments about this application?
An Iva Pohner has her hand extended?
Yes, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
My name is Eva Pohner, I-V-A-P-O-H-N-E-R, and we live on 27 Springview Drive. Well, this is about three minutes, so I'll try to go quick. We live on a street that's bordering Laninex Plaza. As soon as the redevelopment plans became public, I have studied the plans and I'm shocked by the apparent disregard for health and well-being of the current and future residents of this community. My views are based on facts and studies, but also based on common sense and deeply rooted fear for my health and health of my family. Our small development is sandwiched between Route 287, 80 and very busy Parsippany Road. The traffic volume has steadily increased and once quiet and healthy space is now one of the most polluted places in metropolitan area. We all know that the interchange between 287 and 80 is bumper to bumper parking every morning and afternoon when people go to and from work, and it is also a major track route. I've monitored air pollution on daily basis in the spring using readily available iPhone app, and the pollution was the same as busy streets of Manhattan. There are also many studies performed by, for example, Health Effects Institute. Pollution causes asthma attacks, it causes asthma in children, impaired lung function, premature death, and so on. And here is the point, the areas most effective, or most affected are roughly in the band within point two to point three miles, which is 300 to 500 meters of the highway, and that's where our community is built. On top of it, there are diesel trucks that produce cancer-causing pollutants, and I can go on and on. I'm going to cut this out. Please research that. I think we should be looking to improve the situation for current residents and not subject future residents to this. The proposal was presented as modern and inspired. What is modern or inspired about location of a playground and sports field or apartment building right next to Route 287 and 80? Who will send their kids to play there? Nobody in their right mind. And no, it is not the same as the Smithfield Park, that's not part of a residential complex. Building this denies us of the basic human right, and that's the right to clean air. Hundreds of trees that currently create a little bit of a barrier will be cut down. Five-year construction will increase air pollution and noise pollution. Our health will be impacted, there is no doubt about it. There will be over 1,000 cars going in and out of this small area and the population density will be 14 tons higher than average in Parsippany. I was hoping that COVID-19 will teach all of us a lesson that such populated, highly populated areas is not a good idea. Well, I am asking you to please shut this down. I understand the need for redevelopment, I really do. We own small business and I know that businesses evolve. I totally get it, but I think this is hazardous and inappropriate. I thank you for listening and trust that common sense and concerns for our health will prevail. A vote to approve this proposal signals to all of us that this town officials fail the most important responsibility, and that's responsibility to protect the residents. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Pohner. Very well stated. All right. I see that Mr. Barbario is there.
You hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, sir.
Jane Barbario, 137 Minneapolis Boulevard. I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to speak, but this project will be a traffic nightmare for our residents, particularly residents in Parsippany who know all too well that Parsippany Road cannot handle the additional traffic caused by over 600 new housing units and the associated, and the height of those, of the project, it just makes sense. My administration was presented with very similar proposals. We studied it and determined that the impacts on our town, particularly traffic impacts, just were enormously bad. I rejected two proposals similar to this when I was mayor because I knew then what I still know now. This project will ruin the quality of life for our Lake Parsippany community. My traffic experts concluded that this extra traffic would create unsafe conditions along Parsippany Road for residents needing to get into, onto Parsippany Road from Lake Parsippany. I've listened to the testimony and I didn't hear any analysis to address that point, except that onsite you can only vote with regards to onsite traffic, but basically the onsite traffic is going to create a hazard for the offsite traffic. Mayor Sereno should be here tonight. It's his job to be here, but he's not, and why? Mayor Sereno ran a platform of being against development and he's here championing the largest development to be built in Parsippany, and I find this to be a shame. Board should thoroughly review the safety associated with the traffic impacts on this project. You know, when I was the mayor, there were times I had to make hard decisions that weren't popular, but I always showed up for our residents to explain my actions. You know, I've been listening all night and I was here for all three meetings and I stated this before, this is a big project, a magnitude size, and we're having it via WebEx, and I understand the whole COVID situation. I truly do. I understand how it works, I'm dealing with it like everybody else. But this really favors the developer when you have meetings like this. Residents can't come out, they can't really voice their opinions. I get phone calls with regards to that, you know, they don't have really an outlet. Okay, I do want to talk about one thing, and you can stop me, Chairman, when I hit my time, because I know I can go on forever, believe me. We talked about snow removal, garbage removal, but you also have the Condominium Act, and I don't know if that applies to this site. What the Condominium Act is that townships have to reimburse associations like this for picking up snow and garbage. I don't know if that's included in that, in this project, but I've stated my case. I've had this, had this site, three times I actually had three developers come. I never got to meet the third one, which I think is the one you're, we're dealing with today. The bottom line is the traffic impact will be immense. I grew up in Parsippany, I've been here 56 years. I grew up off of Parsippany Road, and Marcy Phelps is correct, I grew up with a husband. The traffic is going to get worse because the onsite traffic is going to destroy the areas in Parsippany. I know the whole thing with the affordable housing, I've dealt with it, but I've had people sit there when I wasn't a man, maybe one or two on the board, tried to beat me up with the Whole Foods, but you never got affordable housing on it. Not one ounce of affordable housing on it. The bottom line is this, it's an unsafe, this will make the Parsippany Road unsafe. I can go on forever, but I'll hold that off for another time. I know you board members have a very, very tough decision to make, and I know your hands are tied. I know the CO rules and fair share housing, I know all that. And I, and I, and I really, my hearts go out to you because whatever decision you make, it's not going to be easy. I thank you for your time.
Barb, for your comments, we appreciate it very much.
Let me just add, you know, Mr. Barbario, you know, very well read on your part, but you know, the mayor has decided to appoint a designated as council, and I'm not here to defend the mayor by any stretch, but he's appointed his designee in the form of Judy Hernandez. She has been a thoughtful, considerate, and absolutely exceptional member of this board. That's all I want to add.
Since you had to make a comment, am I muted?
No, can't help yourself, right?
Since you had to make the comment, I wasn't talking about Ms. Hernandez, I was talking about the mayor. The mayor should be present for these type of meetings. I was and you should be. The mayor's voice should be heard when you have something of this magnitude. By no means of I'm saying Judy Hernandez is not capable. What I'm saying is the mayor should be here for these types, types of meetings. This is, this is going to change what Parsippany is. It's a huge project, Mr. Carlson.
It indeed is, and, and.
I've lived here a lot longer than you've lived here, and I know this town and I know that, I know that road. I know better than you, traffic experts.
Good job, Jamie. Thank you.
Not Scott, John, I apologize, you're muted.
Thanks for the catch. Julie Peterson, are you there? Julie, I think you're on mute right at this moment. Julie, still can't hear you.
Okay.
There you are.
There we are. Okay. I have a statement to make. My family has owned the land and the site of the Livingston Benedict House since 1857. It's 200 feet from this apartment. The house is one of the few surviving buildings from the Revolutionary War period. In the 150 years since we've owned it, it's changed from farmland and pasture to Route 80 and office zone. My parents made a decision to sell land to the developer of Laninex in the 70s, thinking an office research zone would be an appropriate neighbor to a historic resource. Our four and a half acres are protected in perpetuity from development with a New Jersey Historic Trust Conservation easement that was written in 1999. We don't receive any government help or support in our quest to preserve this historic house. I try to pay attention to zoning, it's very hard. Normally, there would have been a Section 106 review for a project like this to determine its impact on the historic resource. There should have been a balloon test so all of us neighbors could gauge the height of the massive six-story buildings. I don't consider six-story a mid-rise building. I can't find any more in Morris County to look at. The Historic Preservation Advisory Committee wasn't asked to comment about this proposal, as is pretty customary. I find that this development works against many of the goals of the new land use master plan. It allows the developer to build a city in what's a single-family residential area. Green Hill's development and our property are all residential and low-density in character. The proposed housing could bring an unknown number of children who will need schooling. Current annual price per student in Parsippany is over $19,000 per child. If there are only 200 children, that's a cost of around $3,800,000 a year that we're invoking. Where will they attend? Eastlake schools at capacity? And I know that Parsippany Road is considered too hazardous to walk on because we drive our grandson, the board doesn't provide a bus for him, but we drive him or walk him to school. 75 townhomes is less than the 83 townhomes in Green Hills, but the townhouses will be built on an area about a quarter the size of the Green Hills development. We all know affordable housing is needed. Given a ratio of 15 to 20% affordable to 85 market range, I guess we'll have to have 12,900 new housing units in Parsippany to meet our goal. So there was a list of sites, and there were several sites that I'd consider better than the Laninex. In a race to guarantee affordable housing, important principles as outlined in the master plan are being compromised, and I'm just going to summarize because I read them. The first one is to preserve and protect the character, density, and aesthetics of established and stable residential neighborhoods by restricting incompatible land uses from areas and significant increase in intensities of use. And like I say, I think I could even go with five-story buildings, but a six-story building with a parking garage is not low-density. Encourage and provide buffer zones and transition areas, that's really important in this case, especially for the people in Green Hills. Mitigate identified transportation problems. We've talked about this and I understand why we can't constantly think about it, but 2,000 more cars on the entrance that we use to get in and out of our houses is kind of complicated. Ensure that any prospective development preserves or enhances the township's environmental features. This entire property was a wetland when it was a pasture, believe me, I lived here. Each added building has put more of a strain on the ability of the tract to handle storm runoff. When the townhouses are built at the proposed increased level up from Green Hills houses, there will be drainage impacts on those houses, not the townhouses. Encourage new development and redevelopment to take into account the aesthetic character of the neighborhood. Again, six-story buildings aren't a good fit. Reduce the height, consider stepped facades. And establish a unique community that supports and strengthens the historical and cultural resources of Parsippany. I urge this planning board to adhere to the goals in the land use master plan that was written and approved by you and the town council. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. All right. I'm looking for any other hands raised? All right. I am seeing Mr. Barbario still, is his hand raised? Was there anything additional from you, sir?
The president will be the master of all, and they can vote no one.
Okay. All right. Seeing no other hands raised, I will. Hands raised, I'll close the public portion.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, it seems like there's someone who's trying to raise her hand. Teresa Jones?
Thank you for calling it out. I see her now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. At first, I wasn't going to speak because everyone else did speak so eloquently and touched upon every aspect, but then I thought it is important just so you do know the developers that there's a lot of people here that are not very savvy on, with technology and that probably would be at this meeting in this whole Green Hill section. But I'm in total agreement with everyone that has spoken. We came to Parsippany over 40 years ago, and it was for that reason, because of the community that it was. We don't want high buildings, we don't want six-story buildings, it's going to be more like a city. You know, there's the changes for the traffic. I mean, Parsippany Road is so dangerous now, I cannot imagine with all of those people, you know, whether children are walking or adults are walking, it is, it's a nightmare, the traffic, the schools. I mean, every issue that people, sewer and water utilities are going to be bursting the same as the schools are. So every issue that everyone else said, I'm in total agreement with it, and I just wanted to say that. And I think it's a very bad decision if this goes through. You know, right, and the impact of this happening for five years. So, thank you.
We appreciate you adding your comments. Thank you. All right. Were there any other members of the public who wanted to add commentary to this application? Okay. At this point, we'll go ahead and close the public portion, and we'll open it up for comments from the board. In order to make sure all the board members get an opportunity to, how about I just, uh, order as I see them on this, on the screen of panelists, and hopefully I won't forget anybody?
Mr. Chairman, can I just give the board some legal advice before we begin?
Uh, yes, did I forget to include Mr. O'Neill's closing statement?
You, you did, so let's, let's go there.
Okay. Thank you for the reminder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I'll thank the board for its time over these last three nights. I'll remind you, uh, that we are here for a fully compliant application with the requirements that were adopted as part of the Affordable Housing Plan adopted by the council. It was subject to years of discussion, both under the Barbario administration and the current administration, as to what that plan was going to look like, and at the ultimate adoption of that plan, Lanedex was included in that plan. An ordinance, an overlay ordinance was adopted, and we comply fully with the requirements of that ordinance. The issues regarding traffic, all these other issues, we've addressed these issues as they apply to this application. If there are other issues that need to be handled in redevelopment, we can talk about that. This site was also designated for redevelopment. But we should keep it just to what this application is, which is what you see before you and part, an important part of the plan. I know that the town is still, uh, in court with that plan. We'll be attending a hearing on Wednesday about that, and we look forward to reporting that the board approved this project. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may?
You're muted, John.
Mr. Chairman, if I can address the board before deliberates?
Go ahead.
The only thing I, I, I want to add to your deliberations is this. Whether or not this project should happen has already been decided. That was decided by the Township Council in its rezoning for the property. What is left for you to decide is whether or not this is an appropriate arrangement of buildings, roadways, accessory structures, those sorts of things. That's what is before the board tonight, and I would urge you to restrict your comments and your decision to those things. That's all.
All right. Understood, Mr. Carlson. Mr. Figgery, you are first on my list. Would you like to provide any commentary tonight?
Uh, I suppose so. I've been listening intently here. There's obviously some very serious concerns. I have, uh, tried to imagine living in one of the townhouses, and I've also tried to imagine living in one of the existing neighborhoods. Um, as was discussed earlier, um, I also years ago lived on Barnesboro and, which of course necessitated left turns on Precipiny Road, which are their own, uh, experience. So I know the area, and, um, I, just as was discussed with the, with, with the traffic, uh, it's, it's so difficult to calculate. Worst-case scenarios are, are problematic. You know, for me, um, I don't know if they will be worst-case scenarios. And that, that kind of is, is where, where I am at. I feel that the width of the sidewalk is, is, uh, barely sufficient. I can see kids walking on the grass uh, on the, uh, on the, the building side, not the roadside, on the way to Allentown Road. I also, uh, understand, uh, children like water find, uh, the shortest path, as Mr. DiPiero, Councilman DiPiero was, was, uh, mentioning. All that, all, all that being said, I think a, a lot of these things are, are possible. Uh, these negatives, um, but not necessarily, uh, definite. And that puts me in a position of trying to balance what could potentially, uh, be a negative versus what we know to be a positive. And so while I am, uh, not fully, and I would say one other thing. The height of the buildings because of the, uh, the, the, whatever the technical term is, the slope downward from, from eye line of Precipiny Road mitigates it quite a bit. Um, I just wanted to go on the record for that. I, I'm sure other people have thought the same thing. It's not exactly an original idea. But, um, so it's not like we're building, or they, they're building, uh, from, from Precipiny Grove, uh, Precipiny Road grade. It's much lower. But it's still an issue. I understand people's concern. So, uh, for me, I am a, I am going to support this project. Um, I don't want to say reluctantly, but, um, with, with mixed feelings. I do think that it's the best solution, and given the purvey that we have this evening, um, I think that the applicant has come back to us several times here, trying to address our concerns. And, uh, our town is changing, and our job is to try to manage that as best we can. Uh, so, uh, thank you for letting me speak.
Okay. I will move on to Ms. Hernandez.
I thank you. Um, I appreciate the applicant and all the time that they spent the last three meetings and all the people that came out to to listen and, um, give their comments. Um, I don't have a lot of comments, but I am not in favor of the project. And that's it. So I vote no.
Okay. Mr. Mandell?
Okay. Personally, uh, I would vote no. But based upon what the current law is and the town's agreement uh, under COA, uh, I will be voting yes. And I guess that, that sums it up.
Understood, Mr. Mandell. Mr. Mealy, do you have any comments? Mr. Mealy? Dominic?
I'm sorry, I had muted. Sorry.
No problem.
Um, my concern is that this application is way too large, given the one access road in and out, and the expected volume of traffic that it's going to provide. I have been on that road at eight-thirty in the morning trying to get to a doctor's appointment, and it was gridlocked from Littleton Road on the north to the entrance to two eighty-seven on the south. If this were downsized to some extent, I might agree with it, but under these circumstances, I must vote no.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mealy. Um, Councilman DiPiero?
Okay. When the, uh, Town Council, um, approved certain sites for affordable housing, we would not afford the opportunity to talk about building heights and density in, in many of the different tracts. We were under a court order to come up with affordable housing, and that's what we did. So to blame the council for everything that's going on is, is not fair. As far as this site goes, in my opinion, the density is too high. Those two apartment buildings were reduced by two stories each, um, to reduce the density. Townhouses I have no problem with, but the two apartments I do have a problem with, uh, the, and the overall density that that produces. So I'm going to vote no.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. DiPiero. Mr. Dinsmore?
Our mistake in this, I think, was when we approved the rezoning. We did approve it. I didn't have a complete understanding of just how dense this population would be. I worked there in Lanedex in the seventies, and it was a pain in the butt to get in and out. This will not be as bad as that because the density of traffic generated by residential is not as high, at least not during the rush hours, as the office complex when it's full, but it does substantially increase the density of traffic. I really do think it changes the characteristics and the nature of the neighborhood, rather substantially. I'm, I'm having a great deal of difficulty because as our, uh, attorney has told us, we have to stick to strictly what is internal and whether this is a good plan internally, uh, that the zoning already basically allows them to do what they've proposed. It's just that we get to have a say in how they go about doing it. But it doesn't change the density of the population. It doesn't change anything other than how it's arranged. Where, uh, you know, I, I do think we do have a say uh, in one item, and that is that I think that the remaining office building, I'm not entirely sure that we need to agree to have all of this and retain Building seven hundred. Uh, I need to hear from our attorney and from, uh, the applicant on that. To see if I have, we have a little wiggle room to, to reduce the, uh, intensity of use here. If for some reason Building seven hundred were to disappear, I would be in favor of this application. Because I think that would reduce the density and the intensity of the use. As it stands right now, uh, I, I'm, I am very uncomfortable because I'm told that the deal has been cut, that we've got a, uh, an agreement to say we have to do this, and that the, the, uh, council has agreed to it. Uh, and that doesn't leave us any wiggle room. Well, I'm, I'm thinking that maybe we do have wiggle room with the office space involved. And I am opposed to this application the way it has been presented. Uh, and if our attorney indicates that we have some wiggle room with regard to the density and intensity of use because of the offices there, then I would reject this application. If I'm told we do not, then I have to rethink my thoughts.
Mr. Dinsmore, if I may? The application is the application. And you should consider the application as presented.
Yeah, I, I agree. And as presented, we have, is, is it our overlay zone, does that truly, I mean, is it truly completely fitting into that overlay zone with, I, I mean, the, the, the whole point here is, is, has, has some of the objectors have made the point. This is, this is a, a, a bit of a, of a city, an urban, almost an urban area plopped down in suburban Precipiny. And you've got the mixed uses. And I, I recognize, again, this was my mistake in agreeing to the overlay zone the way it was presented. Completely my mistake. Uh, if I had thought it through, I might have, uh, tried to reduce the intensity of use at that time, and I'm just trying to find out if, uh, because I, I don't think it really meets what I wanted out of our new master plan. It may actually meet the, the, what is stated in the master plan, but I did not want to have such a high-intensity traffic zone created within our, our town, even though the potential intensity of traffic was there if the Lanedex offices had all been filled. I, I get that. I, I completely agree with that approach, and that, and it's, because it's literally the only uh, way we can often, uh, judge something. But I'm just trying to think that, that I would have preferred had this been more of just residential without the office uses. I think that might have made more sense. So I'm, I'm, I'm just very uncomfortable with the size and density of this, and I, and I actually think, even though it meets the overlay requirements, I do think it violates the spirit of, of what we entered into when we tried to create a master plan to keep, uh, our city, our town, not, not city, yet. You know, a, a bit of a, of a, an oasis away from, uh, the dense population of the suburbs closer to New York City.
Okay. Mr. Dinsmore, thank you for your comments. You know, I, I really appreciate all the comments from the board, as well as from the public tonight. I sympathize with Ms. Bonner and her comments about the health issues of that, of that area with Ms. Valenzano, and, and the concerns about access to education for the children, not just for the children of this neighborhood, but also the impacts that may have on other communities in our town. Um, and Ms. Phelps regarding the traffic in that area. I, uh, I agree with Mr. Dinsmore that this was really an issue that should have been dealt with more seriously when the rezoning was put in place. And, um, while the rezoning was presented to the board as, as part of, uh, you know, it wasn't our proposal. It was, it was, this was the rezoning that's being proposed. We could have spoken up more to, uh, to, to evaluate it with regard to the master plan. Uh, so I appreciate those comments, Mr. Dinsmore. Uh, I always appreciate what you and the other board members have to say. I, where we can't go though, and, and this has been discussed on multiple occasions, is traffic flow out of the community is not an area where we're allowed to evaluate. And as Mr. Dinsmore also said, the density of the property would not be able to change. If, if we were to lower it to four stories instead of six stories, as, as I heard some of you speak about, they would have to find another place to put those people because in order to meet our affordable housing requirements, that's what this land is set aside to, for redevelopment for that purpose. And so the number of units is not something that's going to change. The density is not something that's going to change. I'm continuing to look through my notes, and I just don't see places in our notes or it, in our guidance and within the principles of our, of our, uh, of our board where we have that flexibility to address some of the concerns that are facing us. But one area that we do have is, is, uh, potentially, as Mr. Dinsmore said, whether the seven hundred- is a potentially, as Mr. Dinsmore said, whether the seven hundred building could be used. We don't see anything in this, in this application to further support, enhance the community outside of the people that would live here. This is difficult, so I'll leave my comments there, and I'll continue to dwell on my decision for the next few, few minutes as, as that time permits me. So, Mr. Carlson, what's the next procedural step that we should follow in this?
Thank you, Chairman. I think we're looking for a motion to approve or to deny this application.
Can I make one more comment before we do that?
Yeah.
Please do.
Please.
If, if we were concerned, this concerned about the density, that we're creating a, a small city inside of Persippany, and the density is, is the issue. If, if we were to boil it down to require a lower density, that would bounce, Mr. Carlson, you can correct me, but I believe that would bounce back to the council and the courts to find someplace else to put the affordable housing units that would not be established here.
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that's fully correct. This would continue in court? I'm sure, I'm sure the plaintiff, the applicant would, would, would press their case in court that here there is a need and the township is not allowing it.
Well, I, I didn't say that. The township would have to find someplace else to meet the affordable need that it didn't provide here.
That's not accurate. That's not accurate.
What says you, Mr. O'Neill?
Well, right now, this, uh, this ordinance was adopted as part of the plan that was adopted by the court. Now, the township hasn't finalized that plan because of various issues that kept up. But what would happen here is normally if you deny an application that fully comploms with an ordinance, you just get a prerogative writ lawsuit. But we would be forced to file a contempt proceeding that the township had violated its settlement agreement with fair share housing. And that would open up the township to additional issues. So it's two, it's two-pronged. It's really the normal prerogative writ case that you would have if you denied something, and all you're supposed to be doing is measuring this application against the ordinance. Then the other issue is that ordinance was adopted as part of that plan. You can't modify that plan in the way Councilman DiPiero is suggesting here. Not at this point. So you would be in violation of that plan. Now, I might be able to alleviate some of the concerns by offering that my client has just instructed me, we will remove Building seven hundred from the application. We don't have to do that. That is beyond the ordinance requirement that was adopted for this, but to facilitate and to address some of the concerns of the board, we're willing to offer that.
Okay, so any motion that we, we address tonight eliminates Building seven hundred?
Yes, that's right.
Thank you.
Okay. And so per Mr. Carlson, we are awaiting a motion to accept or deny this application.
With that change, Mr. Chairman, I would.
If I may, with the conditions agreed to by applicant, which I will not enumerate here.
Yes. This is Mr. Dinsmore. With, with those changes that the applicant has agreed to, and because we are in a position where it meets the requirements of our zoning, I would move the application to be granted.
Second for Jerry.
All right. Motion from Dinsmore, second for Jerry. Ms. O'Neill, would you please call the roll?
Councilman DiPiero.
A reluctant yes.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Figgieri?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
No.
Mr. Mandell?
As I stated before, reluctantly, yes.
Mr. Mealy?
No.
Chairman Von Aiken?
Yes.
Two against, five-four.
Okay, I appreciate the time of everybody involved in this. Mr. O'Neill, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening.
Okay. Seeing nothing else on the agenda for tonight, I'll accept the question to close the meeting.
So moved, Mandell.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? Okay, no opposed. Thank you for your time tonight on this difficult decision. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. It was nice to work with you.